Minutes. I don't know if it's before or not, but it says Vicki was absent, but she was here right after that.
I think I put in that she-
Could you put it in there? I didn't know if she was-
I thought I did.
That's arrival time, I thought I read it.
She had to be here to make all those motions.
Right now, I don't see- oh yeah. Second paragraph, Vicki Peterson arrived at five three.
Okay, sorry, I missed it.
Yep. It's kind of hidden.
Financial report. Not out of the ordinary.
So we have to put up a new financial shot in this because we've never had-
They had to put up something different, and I'm not sure why. And we're doing- part of it was we're hosting a conference. Practicing our insurance, okay, and then they're doing the bid so that it can be changed, so when it changes direction. So we got all count panels or whatever it was.
Make a difference upwind direction, shot?
Discus.
Oh, something like that, oh.
Shot and discus.
That ESU eight-
I'm sorry. Say in a discus, you're supposed to be throwing into the wind or throw it further or something.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Actually right down the line. If you got it down the line, obviously throw it out and just slide back.
Throw it and run.
They use the wind.
Use a lot.
That twenty-nine thousand for the ESU eight, is that once a year, or how often does that happen?
Every month.
Every month.
And it varies a little bit, but yeah, it's pretty-
That includes our expenses for the major learning center.
Okay.
And then also, that includes like our speech.
Speech.
Speech and-
Preschool staff.
And psychologists.
There's some motivational therapy, some physical therapy, not all of it, but anything that comes to be ESU eight.
Anything that we have in here that goes on that too?
Well, see, we have our own special here, but we don't provide the speech services. So a psychologist, we don't, we don't have a psychologist here. So we have, we pay, I mean, those are all built out and aligned towards special education expenses, you know, working out here like this, veterinary. And, you know, paras, those types of things. The bulk of this goes to-
ELC, yes.
...the services. About three more services.
Okay. Okay, I'm close.
So is that something that if we had a consolidation, we could add to that house? Is that what you're talking about, that the whole standard is all the same, or can we just-
I think definitely something you want to look at, because you would be large enough to have our students, if you hire, you know, a teacher for like level three services. And then you could probably import people, give them more, okay, worth of money.
Any other questions? Feeling like to make a motion?
Do you accept the consent agenda, President?
Who's in seconded? Jason?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Vicki?
Yes.
Carrie? Public comments. We are now a portion of our agenda, let us say, of a public comment. Each person wishing to address the board will be recognized by the board president. Also, each person wishing to address the board will be allowed only one opportunity to do so this evening. Request that you limit your comments to five minutes or less, and we will advise you, when that five-minute time has elapsed, remember, please remember that this is a public meeting. For the conduct of the business of Plainview Public School District, offensive language, personal attacks, and hostile conduct will not be tolerated. You should further be advised that there's no legal protection for any comments that are made. Are there any public comments?
I'd just like to comment on the voting on the survey tonight. I just hope everybody voted on it. You've been talking, you've been talking about it for two years now. It's time to move, move on, get the ball rolling here. I just hope you vote for it.
Okay. Thank you.
Brooke? Thanks for adding that part to the agenda. I appreciate it. Another five-school study thing, it's nice. If we could, can I ask you just all to speak up quite a bit more? There's a fan and stuff, and it's real hard to hear. Pretty hard to hear back here, just for, just for argument's sake. I don't know if anybody gets the Creighton newspaper or sees the Creighton newspaper or not, but they had their community meeting, and there's an article in there about their community meeting. They did a pretty long question and answer with the Dan Morel asking and answering questions. Beyond just reading through this, I guess, there were questions about if merging, a question was raised, if merging was the only option being looked at by the committee, and Board President Dan Morel said, "No, we're just looking at the possibilities to do the best job of finding the best education for our kids," which I found to be kind of in conflict to what everybody was saying at the last committee meeting about merging was the only option, the five-school option is the only option right now. That's what we're looking at, that's what we're going forward with. I just found that to be kind of interesting. Questions were raised regarding the administration of the elementary schools, and if each would be run separately, and how long the younger students would be educated in each town. The response to operation of the schools, would it be, it would be one district, and the administrators would oversee all the schools. Morel said the elementary schools would stay in the individual towns for fifty years. A patron asked about Creighton's six million dollars in reserve funds, and the board president said it was just a reserve. Jensen said it would protect the levy in the future. He said if a merger took place, the funds would go back to the taxpayers. Discussion, considerable discussion occurred on the effect a merger would have on the towns and businesses and communities. Some of them voiced concern that any merger would hinder business in the communities. One citizen said, "I never thought of it as the school's responsibility to keep people in business." Must have been the same guy that was at our meeting. And so if you guys are interested, I get the papers from all the other towns. If you do know they have a town meeting or anything, and you'd be interested to see if the newspaper covered it and what they had to say, I have those. But those are some of the comments that I thought were interesting, or possibly not necessarily what everybody had talked about every single time. These kind of interesting answers, so anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Okay, action item, discuss act on a roof repair bid proposals.
Okay, I had quick bid notifications in the Plainview paper, in the Norfolk paper. Set a time, March twenty-fifth, ten o'clock, for the bids to be submitted. We did have three companies submit them, Crafts construction on the Norfolk, Western Roofing on the Norfolk, and Guarantee Roofing on the Norfolk. We opened the bids at ten o'clock, all three companies had their representative there. I think I included the sheets from each of those bids. If you look through there, the lowest one at the time was from Guarantee Roofing, was substantially lower. Once we opened the bids, kind of disbanded. I got a call about a half an hour later or so from Guarantee Roofing, and they had forgotten to include a small portion of roof over on the junior high building, so they withdrew their bid. I did call Western Roofing then, because they were the next lowest bid, just to let them know. I did invite all three representatives to come to the meeting tonight. I don't think any of them are here. And I did put this, this item early on the agenda, in case, you know, in case they showed up, so they wouldn't have to sit through the entire meetings. We have one action item, and then we'll go to discussion items and back to action items.
So Guarantee didn't want to resubmit a bid?
Well, it's not really fair to let them go back and submit it after they seen with the other people, so they just withdrew it. And he told me, he says, "Probably couldn't do it any less than what the others did." That wouldn't have been fair to them.
So I see Western Roofing is tearing off the existing roof system down above the family consumer science room only. Is that the same as removing the ballasted roof system?
That's removing the, yeah.
So that's just, that's the only part of the family consumer science room?
On the, over the office and family consumer science, that entire area. They are not going to remove the little piece of roof up on there.
But they're both talking about the same area.
So what this says, it says the family consumer science room only. That's the only one that's going to be-
It should be unified, it should be unified.
Should say that.
For the new bids.
That's on Western Roofing.
Have you had either one of these companies do what-
Western has done the last, I think, two roofing projects we've had. They did the gym, the pirate gym area. And I think they did the last one we had here. Guarantee, I think, they've done mostly all the roofing once before that.
So you didn't have any problems with Western?
They did good work.
Not redoing the same roof.
And Guarantee, I mean, had no problems with Guarantee as far as I know, prior, I think. I don't, not too sure, I don't think they used to bid, did they, before, they used to bid for roofing?
Western?
Well, did, they put them out for bids?
Oh, yes.
Did they?
Sometimes, sometimes not.
Like I said, Guarantee Roofing, I think, set up kind of a manning of a plan, but then Western had to do the last two drives.
Will we make a motion on that they are covering everything that needs to be done?
Yeah, you can make the motion to stipulate, make sure that's covered, that entire area is covered. Yeah, there wouldn't be any problem.
I think you can, if you can just say all of it, that's, that's, specifics of the bid, that should cover, shouldn't it? The motion says it covers all the specifics of the bid.
Yeah. Well, the, the-
This is different than this?
Your bid hasn't shown both the FCS room and the junior high.
Well, the bid would be the copy that you have, that I gave you there. It's the, we're looking for the wording in here. Does stipulate that any irregularities to the aforementioned specification shall be written clearly explained, which they haven't pulled that out of there. I think there's some wording in here someplace, and we'll air it, send out. Number one says family consumer science room only. Yeah. Well, it says the following instructions and our information shall be adhered to by all companies submitting proposals. And then it lists when the meeting is, and then it specifies the, the areas in the letter specified. High school office, let's see. Flat roof, which covers the family consumer science rooms, a high school office, a small section of roof on the junior high building. But I don't know if I should check. I don't think I should, I hope I'll check, make sure I don't get into a problem.
Okay.
So what, okay. I'll make a motion to approve the bid of Western Roofing Company, who will repair the roofs over the FCS and office area that-
That specified.
That specified in the official bid. There, and a small portion of the roof on the junior high building for a price of fifty-four thousand three hundred eighty a gallon.
For a second?
A second.
voting? Vicki?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Mike? Yes. Steve? Yes. Mike?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Or Carrie?
Okay. I want to refer to policy review section. First policy in there, and as I put in my notes, I apologize for using this, but I discussed this on the last meeting. And my wife being a hospital man, I did not get back to it for several days. And I couldn't remember what the board said, and I know that there was some concern with, on the last, the last couple of sentences there, lines. It seemed like you kind of remembered, hey, the teacher bid, I want to say advocate, that's not what I wanted to get for the student.
Advocate?
Advocate, there you go, thank you. I wasn't sure how we, you know, how you really stipulated that. You know, above, it does, it does say that, you know, the school, that would imply that teachers cannot take the side of one family member over the other in a dispute. We're probably talking about like the divorce situation or something, because teachers can't take one side or the other. Now, if they were called by the courts to testify, of course, they would be under oath, and they would tell them that they feel it's true. It does say, it does prohibit an employee from listening to a student's problems and concerns, and trying to interfere with a student. Yeah, I just, I couldn't remember what, kind of what the board wanted to put in there, so I talked about it a little bit about it. I decided you better bring it back, or I will re-track more of somebody, so.
Figured it out.
Well, we got to talking, but if somebody, if somebody had to testify, I don't think this would have, this would have anything to do with that. I was worried that if somebody had to testify, that they would not be remaining neutral. But I don't think that, if you can taste, whatever you think is correct or true, that's not going to-
No.
That's not going to be effective.
If you're going to have to ask, answer the judges or the attorney's questions-
Right.
-in the court, you're on, or you'll be under oath.
And I was just concerned that they did pick a side, and they would have to be true. But I don't think, I'm not sure that that's-
Telling the truth and picking a side are necessary.
Right. So maybe, maybe my concern was, was not a big deal.
Well, it is a big deal, but, you know, we have to make sure that, because if they subpoena those, we don't want the choice.
Right.
And we just come up to our head, so.
Has it worked out all right?
Yeah.
A little more, I'll let you know.
So we are all right with this the way it is?
Oh, yes.
I think so.
Okay.
All right.
Next policy on wellness and nutrition. Kind of a general policy. It does kind of set the, talks about the curriculum for nutrition and physical activity, which will be, you know, will cover some of the nutrition things and health classes, family consumer science class, those types of things. Of course, and the physical education and health classes. Also, basically, that we, you know, going to provide lunch program within the guidelines of, you know, federal lunch program. So that's all kind of held, included within that policy. I didn't have any suggestions for changes in it. One of the things in there that we get, you know, we get questions a lot of times, it's on, I guess, the first page of that, under two nutrition guidelines. You'll notice there the number, number two, says no foods in competition with school lunch or breakfast program. That's where we get questions a lot of, like, does somebody bring in something, or, you know, why can't we do this, or why can't we do that?
You can't have somebody come in and have a fundraiser during the school. You can do it any other time.
Government governs, you know, have a pop machine or something, you know, in the lunchroom there, anything that competes, you know, directly with the lunch program.
So what about kids that bring their lunch? Can they bring whatever they want?
They can bring whatever they want.
We can share it with whoever they want, if they don't want it?
They're really not supposed to do that. Like, you can't bring in two large pizzas and expect to feed five people at the table.
But you can bring the pizza.
But if you're going to bring in a large pizza, eat it for yourself, you know.
Breakfast, too, can they bring their own food?
I mean, we interpret that as no different if you walked in, "The sack lunch, this is what I want my child to eat today," and that's fine, but bringing it in for ten kids, that's, that's a difference, where, if any, you want to compete.
So the pop machine or whatever that you have over here, is that far enough away from lunchroom, or is everything in there qualified, or?
We say that that's far enough away.
They don't have pop in there anyways, mostly just juices. What else?
There's pop, yeah. School, I was at before, our pop machine was in the room where we served lunches, so we turned the pop machine off at eight fifteen in the morning, and it didn't get turned on until eight twenty-five that afternoon. Or it's getting to three twenty-five that afternoon, so, you know, there was no, nobody using the pop machine. But, I mean, we couldn't have done anything over lunch, we just didn't, you know, right there.
Okay, any other questions on that one?
The next policy on the automated external de-piprator. I did make the change in this, and I didn't give you the original copy of it. What I changed was the second paragraph. We actually adopted this policy, I think it was in March of two thousand and ten, and at that time, we had just purchased one de-piprator that we kept over here in the high school office area. Since that time, we purchased another AED that's kept over in the elementary. So I tried to change the wording of that second paragraph to include the AED that's in there, that's stored and that type of thing. That's really the only difference. I didn't change anything else in the policy. I did talk to the school nurse about if we needed any changes, and we do, we do a training, I think it's every other year, but you CPR training, and then she includes the AED training along with that. And then also our asthma team, I mean, they're constantly being updated and have different things and different trainings.
So if you had a new teacher come in, could be in the off year, and they wouldn't get the training?
They could, but I believe Mrs. Graham would go through it.
She does, okay.
There's some specific teachers that are responsible around that?
We, our asthma team, teachers on the asthma team are, I would say, better trained, and all of the teachers aren't trained.
Oh, they are?
Plus, the AED, it's set up, they're automatic. You open them up, they basically tell you what to do, follow these steps.
I don't know, maybe, Frederick, do you want to comment on that? I mean, we do have, some of the team members are probably better trained on the AEDs, but everybody could operate them.
Yeah, I mean, the AEDs that we have are for the common individual, they're basically, lack better terms. It tells you exactly what to do. I mean, there's no other way to really say it. It tells you exactly what to do, where to put them.
Would you trust me with one on it?
I could say that, but-
Well, I mean, it could be any layman, I mean, it could be any person walking off the street could use it, so.
I'm not.
If you want it.
I don't do that so well.
Oak.
It tells you what, you know, what to look for if a person is passed out or whatever, it tells you where to put the, if you're a parent, it's a pad, if it's an infant or it's a doll, you know, what to do, and then it tells you, you know, what to check for, and it tells you to get away from, you know, if it's about to get away from, and just be watching.
See, not two of them down.
It's a button and run.
So that one I will bring back, attention on that change in it. And then the last one, the class or student group gifts, just a general policy about donations. See, I didn't have any suggestions to change it.
Just back up on that. Who is the program coordinator on that?
Basis, Mrs. Graham.
Okay, any questions on any of these policies?
I don't see any.
Okay, we're up to discuss preschool and junior kindergarten.
Okay, kindergarten roundup, preschool roundup. I think the numbers were twenty-four, I think we're down, twenty-four is how we were, twenty-five, we're down.
We were up at, like, to twenty-six at one point, and now we're back down to twenty-four.
Okay, kindergarten. And preschool was at seventeen, the last I heard, so. You know, if we go with preschool and kindergarten as it is, we could do, we can do one or two sections preschool. Two sections would be pretty small numbers. We do one section, then we have, we have to have a pair in there. Anything on ten, we have to have a pair in there all the time, which we use to do anyway.
What happened to JK?
We haven't done anything with JK. We discussed JK, and, I mean, as part of this, it's kindergarten. I don't know the needs on that.
I mean, maybe there's some parents, if there was a JK, maybe they would have them rather go to that program than that one. I mean, I think it's very beneficial for these kids to have a JK program. I'm starting to see it gone.
That would just affect the twenty-four, right? The seventeen would have no, they could move up to that, the twenty-four could stay there, is that correct?
Well, it would take some of those twenty-four.
Yeah, the seventeen would have no effect on that.
I will give you, I guess, some of my personal comments on that. First of all, the Department of Education rounds up junior kindergarten, because it is, they feel it is being used to enrich children. And what was happening, holding children back, they would rather see them go to kindergarten. And they need to be held back, holding that in kindergarten, I guess.
That's sad. That's sad.
It's, I mean, they, they, State Department is not real involved in it, and that's just the bottom line. The other thing with it-
I think there is, does Creighton not have a JK though, too? I think, I think they've-
They have one.
They have one.
Went to two schools in that direction, just got rid of it. Because they had a first grade class, but somebody enrolled a set of twentys, and they turned seven in March, and they were the only ones that were basically seven in that group of kids, everybody up the grade. Because they pretty much had everybody go through junior kindergarten. No, it's, if it's used correctly, and what it's for, I think that's a different story, but I don't think that's what it's being used for by most schools now. And that's why the state, I think, is saying, no, you don't like it, because you're having too many kids. And then, the one thing to think about, too, is that I have half of my senior class running around here that are nineteen years old already, ready to be out of here. Their friends are all in college, that's where they want to be, that's where they think they should be. So you think eventually it kind of catches up. If it's used correctly, it's not a problem, but I don't think that that's what people are using it for. I mean, we shouldn't have a junior kindergarten class of fourteen kids.
No. But I think there are some instances where JK can be very beneficial to kids, particularly in this school.
Correct. But they don't like it holding back if they have an AP. Well, those would be the ones that probably aren't really ready to move on.
So you're just going to hold them back in kindergarten, if the parents decide-
You don't normally, they don't usually hold them back.
What's up with the pair of this?
Easy play, right? I mean, everyone wants to make this.
But I, we, when we kind of talked about it, we just said, maybe wait till the end of the month and see what kind of numbers we have. Because I think our numbers are kind of changing about every single day. Somebody will call and say, "No, we decided to stay, we're not moving." "No, we're going to move." I mean, in two days, move from twenty-seven back down to twenty-four.
They actually call you and tell you, is there again?
Uh, sometimes, yeah.
Wouldn't it be that beneficial to ask these parents if they would be interested in a JK, if they had the opportunity?
I think Mrs. B usually does that. Don't you, Mrs. B? You did that last year.
Of what?
You asked him last year.
Yeah, and I talk to some parents at parent teaching offices, you know, kind of feel them out, but I didn't talk to a lot of them, because I didn't know.
And then I've had a couple talk to me. And I, I have- And then I've had a couple talk to me, and I, I have my list here, and I'm marking off as they visit with me, so that I know. One of them just says they're really young. Well, I don't know that that's a reason. I mean, they make, they make the cutoff. But just because they're young, and they're still gonna be five when they go to kindergarten, does that mean they should be held back if they make the day by four? I don't know.
I mean, but the parents should know if their child, you know, would hopefully, I mean, some are ready and some aren't.
Correct, and some never get ready.
So, is it something that Mrs. Berninger, or you, should talk to the parents? I mean, if she didn't talk to them all.
You could, you, do you still have your letter from last year, Mrs. B, that you used?
I'm sure she'll hear you.
That letter that you typed up and had them mark, was just a yes or no?
The letter you, did you send out a letter last year, or?
Two years ago.
I remember, but I don't, I could've, I don't remember.
It was black, it was on yellow paper, I remember that. It was last year. I'll talk to you about it tomorrow, because I remember seeing the letter, and I think it just said yes or no at the bottom, and it was on yellow paper.
Have you had anybody request to have a?
I did have a couple, yeah. But I don't think the ones I thought were.
I had one parent call me, and they were concerned because the age of their child, they were close to just past the cutoff.
What's the cutoff date?
July thirty-first.
So they have to be.
It's July one, October fifteen, and then July thirty.
You have to be five by.
Five by July thirty.
So it is a little older now than it used to be.
Yeah.
If we have that class, is that, can you mix that in with one of the other classes, if we have a small number?
If we do a junior kindergarten, what we would do is we will have a preschool class, whatever we have up to twenty kids, we can't have any more than twenty kids in a preschool class. And then we could have a junior high, or a junior kindergarten class. And those are both.
Three and a half hours surely?
So one, one would be in the morning.
Three and a half hours in the morning and three forty-five in the afternoon.
And if, if we do not do a junior kindergarten, then I assume we'd be probably two, three sessions, which is a little bit.
I would really like to see if Mrs. Berniker could talk to the parents or send a letter out, first adding, and see where we're at next month.
Anybody all right? Discuss financial support of organizations at state and national conventions.
Let's put this on here, just at state, FCCLA and state FFA convention, we have, I think we had discussion last year on that. Student qualified for nationals, and what we run into, just kind of a refresher here, what we run into is FCCLA. Members from that organization, they go through a kind of a qual, they have to qualify for state and then, and for nationals. And FFA, they kinda decide, I like to go, I like, you know, go to nationals, so. And if I remember correctly, the board talked about last year about maybe putting X number of dollars, giving X number of dollars to the organization. And then say if you had two kids go, they divide it evenly, or if ten kids go, it's, you split that amount of money up. And you remember, you remember that conversation? I went back and looked for my notes, and I didn't, I couldn't find a.
I don't know if it talks about it.
Or if I didn't decide.
But I don't know if we decided anything.
I don't think we decided anything, and I think, the only thing I can remember is talk about it this year.
I have two hundred and fifty dollars written down at one point, so whether that was an amount we thought of, I don't, you know.
So what kind of, the FFA has all the fundraising things that they do, and they're running out of concessions and all that kind of stuff. So they have a lot of money in their account, I assume that they use that for?
They use that for state and national.
Help, help the kids with the state and national convention, and transportation and those kinds of.
Does FCCLA have the same type of fundraising?
They, they don't do as many fundraisers, they have some, and they don't, I don't think they do quite.
But I remember us saying that they needed to start doing that, to help fund this, so these kids could go and not just rely on the school to, to help them.
And I, and I think they've done some fundraising, but.
Is there anything else other than FFA, FCCLA?
Well, see, okay, if we take like speech, which, we treat that very similar, say, to track or basketball. If one of those teams qualifies, you know, we, of course, we do the most, we do, we give a meal allowance, and so much for breakfast, so much for lunch, and so much for dinner, we each, the students are required. So any of those activities, we pretty much cover, but the, the organizations have been, been a little bit different. And, and as I mentioned, I think even, I think even FCCLA and FFA are different because of the qualification standards. And I, I think part of this discussion come up at the time, when we had the person qualified for FCCLA, and I kinda remember talking to Creighton about that, and I think they do a certain amount of money. And they said they, what do you make one kid? We have ten kids, and the board gave so much money towards it. That's about all I remember.
Well, the thing is, the organizations can go every year, too, or qualifying for state and another event. The events that do every year, like speech and track, you don't have the numbers, like football does, or basketball, or those, you know. But normally, they go every year, right, FCCLA and FFA?
I think that the biggest.
Not in the nationals. I know we've been very fortunate here the last two years, I think FFA goes to nationals.
FFA goes to nationals every year, but.
But they're not qualified.
But you don't have to qualify, you can just go.
Just go.
And I think that's what our conversation was about, like with FCC, it was the FCCLA kids that qualified.
Qualified.
Because they actually have to qualify, go to national, or FCCLA, and FFA, they can just all sign up to go.
So what's the difference between qualifying for FCCLA versus qualifying for speech?
Not a lot, they have to, they have a different.
I think it's fairly similar, it's just that it's not an NSA activity, I guess that's probably the difference, but it is very similar.
Act as if they qualified for some, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, like state FFA, and I could be totally wrong here, every kid could go to that, right?
Any FFA members, okay, oh, is that correct?
As long as they, yeah, as long as they have their. They have to have their efficiency stuff done, they have to have those.
They have to create.
It's two hundred dollars with the approved sale, and then you, the, do your presidency and your, to go to state.
So you could have the whole class going, everybody who's involved, versus somebody that they had to do some more.
And how many did you guys just take? Twenty, what, average? How many went twenty? Both of us had it. How many went state?
Nineteen.
But this is state, we're talking national.
Right, and, and they have to, and, and they can all go to nationals, too.
But they just go on their own, they don't have to qualify.
But if we cut national or post stipulation on there, we aren't touching state, we're still paying for their coverage.
Yeah, so if they're getting like a national award, like Star Farm, or whatever the little different awards are, do we do anything extra? Would we do anything extra for that, because they're qualified for that?
Okay, so, but I don't know exactly how all of that works. You don't find out until you get there, right, what you win?
Well, it was.
For state, for national, if you go to national FFA.
Yeah.
And you put in, you don't find out ahead of time.
There, when you're there.
Yeah, see, they don't know, they just put it in and find, they find out everything when they're there. They don't qualify to go to nationals, they submit their stuff, it's all judged, and then when they get there, they find out what they get.
You qualify or national.
Where, where's, where's, you get there, then you get your rank.
So FCCLA, they have to present their progress.
They have to win.
And then they can go to state, and then from state, they can qualify to go to nationals, so it is, so it's different.
It is different than FFA.
Do we have any FCCLA people here?
And I just, I just talked to Mrs. Jacobson about it.
I think, don't they do like their star, their star's competition to qualify for state, or is that a state competition?
That's.
That qualifies them, yes. For state, then, or is that qualifying for national?
That qualifies for national, what they're doing right now.
I don't know how you do it on FFA, FFA, but for FCCLA, you could make that just like a sport.
Yeah, yeah, and I think that's better.
I would agree with that.
And then you could pay for the rooms, you could pay for the meals, because they are qualified for that, just like, just like an athletic.
Now, what about transportation?
Well, we survive, we could buy that, too.
Last year, like, when they go to nationals and it's Dallas, Texas.
What did we do?
I mean, we could give them parents, or we could give them, I would do something like that.
That's where you could do your two hundred and fifty dollars stipulation for transportation, because you have to remember, too, that how many kids actually qualify for national, or FCCLA, you've got so many of those things. But, you know, this year, when I had talked to Mrs. Jacobson, she thought two would probably qualify out of the group, but neither of those were gonna go. Because it's in Washington DC, I told her I would take them, but she said, one has already been there, and the other one had a conflict, that she thought would probably do well with them. It's hard to get there.
Sure.
So, that's where you could do your two hundred and fifty dollars towards transportation. Because they do, they do several fundraisers, and then we just pay for their food, like we do sports.
Food, motel rooms, and then do something towards transportation.
That sounds good to me.
The food would be probably based on what we like.
What we do for everybody else.
So much for breakfast, so much for lunch, so much for dinner, that'd be.
Same thing as what everybody else does.
Do we know what those amounts are, this?
We should know, I, I don't, I don't know for sure. Do you know, Imogen, what then?
Staff is seven, nine, and twelve.
Five, seven, and nine?
It's five, seven, nine.
Five, seven, nine for students, and what is it for, five, seven, twelve?
Seven, nine, twelve.
Are they both the same amount of timeframe that they're going for national, like three days?
Um, the, the one thing, paying for rooms, that I, I would suggest, is that it has to be during the convention time, because I think last year, not state FFA, they, or national FFA, they go with the bus, and they do all that. But those kids would basically be kind of on their own for transportation purposes, that kind of thing, and they stayed two extra days. So the, you have to specify that the hotel's only going to be full the time of the convention. And I don't think they're the same amount of time.
Do you wanna write something like this up?
Yeah.
Write it down.
I'm gonna ask you to repeat a couple, hotel rooms for days of convention.
Just like a sport.
Yeah, same as a sport.
Yeah, and were you, were you talking, two hundred and fifty dollars towards transportation?
For transportation.
That would just be for the student.
Transportation, and then meals would be like?
Stipend.
Athletics stipend, or, or, anything else?
So on FFA, could we do the same thing, but put a maximum on it, so so much per student?
If they're qualified.
They're qualified, they just go.
So you didn't do anything?
I don't know, do they just go?
Because they take the whole crew.
Yeah, well, that's why I'm saying you put a maximum amount of so many dollars, if that doesn't cover, they have to come up with the rest on their own.
If we did that on FFA, then you could say, you could take the whole basketball team down to state tournament every year.
Or close up.
You know, could do all that, yeah, but you're not qualifying, so it's really not representing the school. They are, in a way, but they're not.
You don't need that, I would say, unless, you know, you put X number of dollars, and so have to divide it evenly.
So much per student, up to so many dollars, if there's more than that, they, they break it down to less, or they don't know.
Sometimes thirty kids.
But, well, then you don't cover all, you cover, if you pick five, the first five get paid, or they split that over all thirty, and they gotta come up with the rest on their own.
I'm not one of the sponsors, saying, oh, these five can go with the rest.
Well, no. They raise a lot of money.
They do raise a lot of money.
But they could raise their own money from the five, I mean, you don't give it to five.
They contribute a lot to that, too.
Each get a percentage.
Because they use the greenhouse, we pay for all the stuff that's in there, they.
I love butter breaks, too.
There's a lot of things that do.
Butter breaks, they're so good.
So, like, I'd say just leave it alone, I'm just the FCC, but then, you just have to make a motion for this anyway.
Yeah, I'll, I'll bring it back, so.
We'll do this next time.
Is everybody all right?
On that transportation, like, national FCCLA, the school's not taking them there for transportation, so that two hundred and fifty dollars, we're giving it to the student, the parent. Is that a school activity?
Yes.
Well, you're on your own, it's organized.
But they have it on their own there.
Well, I mean, now let me re, like, they, they went early and they stayed late, and they were kind of on their own, kind of thing.
It's a school activity, right?
But Mrs. Jacobson was there.
They were with Mrs. Jacobson, okay.
But the school's responsible.
So is it any different when they go to the northeast and then give them a vehicle, right?
They're not driving.
Riding them.
They're flying, most of the time, they, they choose, they choose to fly, or, no, they go with her.
With Mrs. Jacobson, okay, so they're with an instructor, they're not going on their own.
No, no, no.
I just wanted to clarify, there's an instructor there.
Yeah.
Well, we got in last, two last year for nationals, one of the students wanted to go with their parent, which is, I mean, we do allow students on occasions to go to an activity with their parents if it's pre-approved.
That's why I said the student only, the parents would have them stewards.
It's not, we're worried about the hotel, man.
And they actually have to stay together, they don't get to stay with their parents, they have to stay with. Yeah, wherever the hotel is or whatever, they have to stay there, and they have to stay with each other, they don't. It's like when I take the close-up kids, they don't get the option to go stay at a family's house, they have to stay in a hotel. Make sense?
Yep. Okay, ready to move on? Discuss cooperative sponsorships.
Yeah, contacted Mr. Jensen and Creighton and Mr. Hammond, honestly, again. Mr. Hammond's gonna put it on his agenda for tonight, talk about it, Mr. Jensen, he said Creighton is interested in talking. I guess the, my thing on this, I, I think we're just gonna have to decide what we wanna do, you know, at some point. What activities, you know, start at junior high, you know, everything, you're gonna pick out a single sport, what are you gonna do? I mean, we're, we're gonna have to make a decision someplace, what we wanna do, and so, you know, just talking every month about what, you know, are we interested?
I think we have to do all or nothing. I mean, you can't pick a sport and say, this, we're low on this one, let's do this one. I mean, it's gonna be two, it's, yeah, so I say all or nothing.
Are you talking junior high and varsity?
I guess I would junior high, well, that's where our biggest number problem is, see how that works.
That, that number's gonna, that.
It's gonna come out through.
Probably with the junior high, it's just gonna keep going on with this.
Right, but you can add it, if it works good in the junior high, in a year or two, when they get into high school, because you're still gonna have four years together as a team when they get into high school. So as soon as they're freshmen, that doesn't mean the whole high school is fall, or it might take a couple of years.
So one thing that would be nice about doing it this year, in junior high, is next year, the year after this one, is when we go into the new two-year cycle for football, correct?
We will be in the second year, I believe, coming up.
So if we knew we were gonna co-op after that, we would have to get those numbers in this fall, so that we could do it.
The next.
We couldn't cooperate football until, until the year after, the year after.
Not next year.
But we would have to say that we were gonna do it now, before that, because we have to have the numbers to get classified, right?
Those numbers, you know, Corey, when do the numbers have to be in for football?
I think they pull them off NSSRS.
Yeah, the NSSRS.
So, but you're gonna have to have, and I'd have to look, unless it's November, is when you put in if you want to co-op. And then they pull, I mean, if you, we wanted to go with Creighton, they would pull those numbers together, but they just pull them off NSSRS, because they know there's too much juggling of numbers.
So we would have to have that decided by November?
I'd have to look for sure, I'm not sure.
Because the classifications for football comes out next year.
February.
Next, actually.
We get our schedule in February, we get our schedule in February.
So we would have to, that's what you have to figure out, anyway.
I think it's November, I think.
I would be all in favor of cooperating with everything else, but we, we might have to face it, football, anyway, basketball, and track, and all those things we can do right away.
Yeah, I think, the thing with that is, even at junior high, you know, getting schedules put together. You may have, you know, some things, or you may be playing the same teams, you're probably guessing, you probably wouldn't like it, difficulty. Then you may have, you know, some things where you may be playing the same teams, you're probably guessing, you probably wouldn't like it, difficulty in scheduling, so. Wanna make sure you.
Junior high's a lot more flexible.
Oh, yeah, a lot more flexible than high school.
Yes.
I'm gonna speak as A D. It's great, I'm gonna speak as A D, it's great to wait till the last minute. It's a pain in the butt, I'll be very blunt. We can say we don't wanna do this, and in two years, oh, we can go back. But those schools have already found other games. I've been fighting for two years to find basketball games to fill out our basketball schedules. It's not as easy as it seems. We're also looking at uniforms, you know, there's a lot of decisions. You all wait till June and try to make decisions for next fall, I, I'll guarantee you right now, I'm gonna be very frustrated. And I don't know if I will stay on as A D if it's, if that's the way we're gonna do it.
So would it be easier to stair-step it in than to do it all at once, does that make any difference to you?
My belief is, take small steps. That's my belief, rather than trying to throw everything at once, because you are dealing with communities that are very highly involved with their identity. And if you try to push them fast, you're gonna meet a lot of resistance. I think if you start small and show them that it can work, you will be a lot more successful in the future. That's my opinion.
The other thing, and I've been talking to Corey, and I agree completely on this, is, you know, if we're gonna co-op, we need to pick one direction or the other. We don't wanna do one sport one way and one sport another way. Then, then you're doing, then you're getting too many steps.
And just to throw this out here, um, because I, Corey and I had a long discussion about this. Um, it didn't matter to me, because I was the A D at Dodge and I hated that job. And so the guy at Howells really liked doing that, that, that was his job, he was the A D. And so he said, well, do you mind if I do all the scheduling? Of course, I said, nope, take it all the way. But the other thing that you have to think about is, what are, what are you gonna do with those kids? They, they don't have an identity. And that's huge. Whether we think that's something small or not, what are they? Are they a bulldog, or are they a pirate? Or a tiger or a pirate? And, and so, um, those are things that, what we think might be minor, aren't minor to the kids. They don't, they have no identity, they don't know what they are. So, our kids just started calling themselves the Jaguars, that's what they ended up being, but they just started calling themselves the Jaguars. I don't know how that ever happened, but they wanted to be something. And they couldn't have been a podcat, and they could not have been a pirate, because the two towns would not have allowed that. So those are, you know, things that aren't important, you would think they would not be, but to the kids they're important, because they didn't have an identity. They couldn't even, I mean, they didn't know what to do, so they just called themselves that.
So if we looked at junior high, is there some activities in the high schools, say golf, cross-country, that would be easy to implement? Where we need more numbers, but they're not a lot of numbers, would the scheduling be pretty easy on those types of things?
What you have to consider with the scheduling is, we have our schedule, and Osmond has their schedule, and Creighton, we got, you got different schedules. Whose schedule are you gonna use? Is it gonna fit? You know, I know when I scheduled for the fall, there's a certain day I can't have any events on, because the parent-teacher conference is for us. You know, I don't know how that correlates with the neighboring districts. They might not give two cents, and I've got administration that's sitting there saying, huh, nice try. You know, so it's just.
And you have contracts already signed.
Contracts, you know, if you were to do basketball, you know, we got, I got contracts with referees.
So Corey, what, I mean, talking about this junior high varsity, are you, and taking small steps, are you thinking, when you're talking junior high, all the junior high sports, or just a couple?
Honestly, I really, and this is my own personal opinion, take where we probably lack, I don't know, without looking at numbers again, but I know we're gonna struggle for a few years, because we're small, we have some smaller classes right now, coming up. It might be football and wrestling, I know it's gonna be low for a while. If you can show that success in one or two, and maybe you wanna do golf and cross-country at the high school level at the same time, I don't know. People are gonna see that, yes, it can work. You throw everybody together all at once, and Mike's got a kid for school A and Bob's got a kid for school B, they get into a argument.
And starting in this.
Be nice, because Mike's kid started in this school, Bob's kid started in this school, you're gonna have conflicts. I think if you start, and I'm not downgrading football or downgrading cross-country, any of those, cross-country and golf, where they're more individual sports, are gonna be easier to see that success. I have, I know I have one coach that'll argue with me on that, but, you know, I just think if you take small steps and show the communities that it will work, you're gonna be a lot more successful in moving more programs that way.
I will tell you, I mean, we've already been, a lot of people know and some know, we've already been consolidating with Creighton in baseball.
Yeah.
And it went fine. Everybody, everybody got along great, and we haven't had one issue, and that, and that's been happening now for.
We don't have a team though.
No, but I'm saying, we, Plainview and Creighton people have already been merging in a sport, baseball. And if you went back, like, say, five, six years ago, I think we had three or four Plainview kids going up there. I mean, in the last couple of years, it's only been one or two, but it worked fine. Everybody got along, and I'm just saying, you know, I think it can, it'll, it can work.
And I'm not disagreeing with you. My concern is, you're gonna start pulling, and this is, you know me well about Steve, you're pulling the identity from Plainview away.
Yeah, I understand.
Pulling the identity from Creighton away, you're taking away that pirate boat, and I'm just using those two towns.
Right.
I'm not saying that's the way we go. It's a very, it's a fine line.
Creighton doesn't have cross-country though, do they?
Yeah, they don't have girls' football.
They don't have girls' football?
Yeah.
See, the last time we, we went out about cross-country, I think with Creighton, we had, what, they didn't have girl, we had opposite ones, we didn't have.
Yeah, they had a girls' team and no boys.
Yeah, boys but no girls.
So junior high, we're looking at four sports.
Exactly.
Junior high, we're looking at four sports. Football, well, basketball, wrestling.
Football.
And track, yeah.
Volleyball.
I don't know how serious these other schools are, thinking of consolidation, as long as we're still discussing five-school merger too. I know we're looking if the school would ever take place, five, six, who knows how many years down the line, but. If we consolidate altogether and we bought all brand-new uniforms for Plainview and Creighton, now we do a five-school consolidation.
The problem is, not this year, coming year, but the year after, they may not have enough numbers to even have a junior high sports.
I understand that.
So that something's gonna have to happen before then.
Yeah.
Well, I think we have to carry on.
Is there a way we can?
I mean, you can't cheat the kids out of their opportunity, just because something might happen. You gotta carry on, give them the opportunity, and, yeah, it might change in a couple of years, but it's, it changes, but you can't rob those kids.
No, I agree. Is there, is there a way we can meet with, bro?
Well, I, 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 my concern, I guess, and this is the same, same conversation, different, different topic, I guess. You know, I, I agree with Steve, I've covered Creighton and Plainview baseball the last couple of years, and I don't see any problem with the kids, I don't see any problem with the parents. But Plainview hasn't had a Legion team in how many years now? It worked, because everybody just went there. There was no, I mean, the, the things that I wrote down just in ten seconds here was, um, how do you work out the travel? Especially just during the school day, where do you practice at? Does each school have separate coaches? How do you pay those coaches? I should've wrote cleaner, because I can't read it now. Where do you compete at? Do you practice two days a week in Creighton, or do you practice two days a week here? Are you both up keeping your gyms? Are you buying wrestling mats for there, buying wrestling mats for here? The example that I use in terms of opportunity is, when I was in high school, we didn't have cross-country, and we had enough kids that wanted to do it, we started cross-country. And it's been going for the last twenty years. When I was, when I started, when I joined Dean Boyer's wrestling team, there were four kids on it, and that's the way it had been for twenty-five years. And then it blew up to thirty as my class got out and everybody else started joining. I mean, I, you, I, I agree that having those opportunities is great, but it's not unheard of to not have those opportunities. Or if you're going to do those opportunities, if Creighton wants to have a golf team, send their kids down here. I mean, I, I don't see the half and half, and both and both, I mean, just, I'm trying to think of like, from a logistical standpoint, from the newspaper, how would I cover things and how would I do it? We make up the programs and the sports schedules and, and that kinda stuff, we work with Corey a lot. Am I gonna have two or three different kinds of posters? I mean, who, am I gonna, am I gonna provide programs for the Plainview-Creighton team? Do I sell thing, I mean, the way we run those programs is, I sell the advertising, and then I print them at my cost, and I provide them to the school for nothing. It's just, it's just something that we do, I don't know that anybody else even does it, I have no idea. But, do I go to Creighton and try to get support from them? Are the, you know, are, there, there's a lot of little logistical things here, and rather than just saying, kind of like on the other, on the bigger topic of the five-school thing, rather than just saying, yes or no, should we do this and should we pursue it? You really need to have a lot of those other questions answered first. I mean, are you gonna make new teams? How are we gonna get our kids over there to practice? Are their kids gonna come here to practice? Golf's not a big deal, it's kind of in the middle. But is Creighton's golf course gonna appreciate losing out on all their kids coming down every, I mean, there's a lot of things to discuss. And I know there's not so much time, but.
I know.
I understand, it has a, I agree though, so those are not things that are not being considered.
Okay, I mean, I just, this is, this is, this is getting into the discussion a little further, and you're talking now about, we need to just call somebody and get it started or get it going, because the deadline's coming up. I mean, it's, just keep in mind, it's not unheard of, not to have, and there's nothing to say that if you don't have a junior high track team that can go places and compete, you can't still practice and teach kids how to do the things in track. I understand the competition is important, but that would certainly lose some of its luster, but you're also talking about junior high sports. So, anyway.
Well, it's not impossible to do.
No, there's a lot of options out there.
Corey has a whole list of questions, I saw him, he showed them to me, and we kinda discussed some of those things. It's very doable, it's, it sounds like a lot, it sounds very complicated. It's just, it's very time-consuming, but it's very doable.
Sometimes you don't answer all the questions, and then you start doing it, and then you say, this comes up, now we're gonna take care of it, you know?
Well, next month is an example of that. During the day, we found some things that ain't really working like we thought they would work, and so, next month I'm gonna ask you to fix those. As you go through those things, you come across things that, that didn't really work very.
You always gotta make a change.
It is very doable. Corey has a great list.
The logistics of cooperatives, you can work it out. You gotta decide what you wanna do.
And you can utilize both schools.
What level you wanna do, you can work out the logistics. When I was at Scripps and Snyder, we set up a cooperative program, softball, we worked that. We worked it out, it wasn't, wasn't difficult to do, but you gotta talk about something.
Right.
But that was at the high school level, you know, junior high is, is even, I mean, it's different than that. I mean, you can work it out, if both schools wanna do it, you'll find a way to work it out.
Yeah. And I think, well, the first question is, we need to figure out what school we'd like to work with, and then we're gonna need to meet with their boards, and maybe their coaching staff, and our coaching staffs, and A Ds, and we don't even know which school we'd go with yet, do we? Or, we're talking to Creighton and.
Too logical.
Two, two logical options, but we gotta start somewhere.
You're basically wanting some idea of what sports we're looking at, so you can talk to them, so they can talk.
What, what, what sports do we, are we serious about at this point?
I would say, my opinion is all junior high and maybe a couple of the high schools, the golf and cross. But I think that's as far as I would go. Do all that at once, and maybe not even all the junior high. Would be my opinion. And just see what they give, for feedback, you know, they're gonna have a different of that idea. But I really wouldn't wanna go any further than that, in the high school, you know?
You know, I just, you can say a lot of, like, let's say we do football for junior high, and now these kids are back to Plainview, I'm just throwing things out there. Now we're, now we got a whole different coach, a whole different program. We offered them football, but now they're into a different, you know what I'm doing, when you get into high school, we don't run the same offensive, Creighton run, I mean, that, I'm just using generic stuff here, you know? Same with basketball, I don't know a lot about basketball, but I'm sure there's different things. So are you helping the kid, or are you just saying, well, we're offering it to you?
Well, I think it's bigger than high, your coach has gotta be on top of that one.
Yeah.
And, yeah, you gotta have an offensive football, and you gotta have defensive football, you gotta have fundamentals.
Yeah. One, you gotta have competition too.
Well, yeah, you gotta have competition.
Everybody knows they're gonna be a starter, why do they have to work hard? But if there's, if they gotta work for their position to be a starter, why it's gonna make them work harder?
Corey, can we play some games where we, where eight-man and eleven-man, two years ago, at junior high?
Junior high.
Yeah, so, I mean.
The same year we played.
We, yeah, we played some eight-man games and eleven-man games.
Yeah. I don't know, another year later, we played that, consider something.
Yeah.
Who do you?
Who do you?
Do we wanna wait and see what these, if these schools respond, whether they're gonna share anything or not?
Yeah, I can do, I can do this.
Okay.
See what Osmond talked about. But I, I don't know if Creighton's gonna talk about it with the board or not, I, I don't, it's a conversation with Jeff, I know, they're looking, a couple of years down the road, their, their numbers are gonna be junior high. Where they're gonna need them in some, in some school.
So, so we don't.
You know, we can go back to two years ago, about golf, and, you know, Coach Cobb sat out there and said, I see no reason to go with Creighton, because they can't offer anything that we need. Well, if you look at the scores right now, we have one golfer better than their next five, you know, the way the scores are. So, yeah, maybe at that time, he had state quality teams, but two years later, look what team we would have if we would've went ahead and done so at that time.
Yeah, there's a, there's a ton of those.
Well, I'm saying, you can't pick and choose the year, it's gonna work.
You already know what they're coming in, they're really committed to it, and they come in, and so then they want to come in later, and they said, no, you couldn't, you can't get them.
Well, you can get in all kinds of things with that stuff. So, you're gonna check with those agencies if there's any, any interest in ours at all? Can we leave it at that? Okay, discuss five-school study. Five-school committee meeting. Jason and I went to that. We took the survey to them, showed them the survey, they were real thrilled with it. They all think it's too soon. And I said, we've been at this for a year and a half to two years. I said, when are we gonna do this? And they said, well, if you wanna do it, you can't stop now, basically. I asked them how come the committee that was supposed to be making the, uh, survey hadn't done anything? Because they, they didn't do anything. And you were on that committee, and, and they decided that they weren't gonna make a survey. And so, that was what they were charged by, by the whole group to do, and they didn't do anything. So.
Yeah, I went through that one meeting, and that's what they decided. Well, before I went to my first investigative committee.
You know, the hard water just builds up, so then you gotta replace the heads, and after you do that, you know, then it worked pretty well for a while, but then, just like, you know, most of us, our arteries gonna get in the way, I'm gonna start flooding up.
And I don't know how much that would run, or that would be.
Might, might be a lot of problems too, all the lines spilled up in the mines, if that starts coming loose, and everything would be flooded up, I don't know.
But we are looking at some things in there. I put Van on here, talked to Bob McCabe a little bit about this, sometimes we find ourselves taking two vans to places, just having enough kids. We're actually trying to look around and see what the possibilities may be, buying a nine or ten-passenger van. You can't do fifteen-passenger ones anymore. Sometimes we can get nine or ten students in a van, if you take one van or two. Sometimes we can get nine or ten students in a van if you take one van or two. Probably this is, we've got a lot of these around. So, we're, we're gonna look to see what, what we have. We do have, one of our mini vans is, uh, it's the, uh, Pontiac. It's giving a hundred and sixty-some thousand on it, I think. It's time we look at doing something with it anyway. So, either, we're either gonna look at, uh, like this nine or ten passenger van or possibly, you know, maybe another Suburban, something like that. Maybe a couple more person in it.
What, what about those short school buses?
The, the thing you run into with, with those, Jason, is it takes a special license to grind them.
Okay.
I put the, the E-rate category two on there just to, to let you know. We had, with our E-rate funding, they changed some things this, this year. We applied for what are called category two funds. And we're just, we have until Thursday to get this done. Hopefully, we're, we've got it done now, the application in. We've applied for basically forty-six thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars. Putting in some new technology, with these new, uh, access points and, and some different things. We're not a hundred percent sure we'll get this. We'll only be reimbursed probably around seventy percent of that amount. We don't necessarily have to do this, but if we wanted to be considered for the federal funds, we had to get, to get the application in. So we went ahead and did that. Right now, I, like I said, it's, it's just, the gal at ESU two in Fremont is gonna get it submitted for us. I don't know, maybe she has already. Um, we got held up a little bit on it because of, uh, with, with Mr. Sauer and myself being tied up a little bit. We weren't able to attend one of the meetings and, so she's been working with us individually to get this, this done. And at some point, we say we're spending a lot of money on that. We will get reimbursed, about seventy percent. We thought it was just, the opportunity for the money is there. We didn't wanna pass that up. So, we went ahead.
Any idea where you would wanna spend it or you don't?
No problem.
We, we, we can spend it, I mean, I guess Tom put it in, in this perspective for me. We've got, the actual, when we bought those, I think, basically they're, were set up for five years. Or three years into that. So, in a, two more years, we're gonna be looking at maybe needing to do something again. So, we thought, why not go ahead? We got a chance to get the federal money to do it. Let's go ahead and get the application in. Then we can replace some of these and not have to worry about, you know, buying big licenses and that on old equipment. So, that was.
Access points, what do you mean by that?
What's that?
What's, what do you mean by access points? Is that your wireless?
Your wireless access points, yeah. So, the, the contract for the, the software, that'll run out. And then we're sitting there, you can't use it unless you renew it. But with the new ones, you get X number of years of software. And the last thing I have on there is the N E S B points. And I don't know, I'm sure all of you get onto the N E S B website and look.
Daily.
Probably once a week, daily. Uh, this is a pretty small print, so.
They never seem to update, huh?
Yeah. There's two of these for each one. I'd be either, I'd just walk around.
Anybody go along or not?
This tells you how many points you've got. If you attend N E S B activities, uh, you get so many points and then it goes towards level one, level two. And I think they go up to level four.
And then your pay goes up. Eighty percent increase.
Yeah, sure. But if you go to, like, the, the beginning, uh, board member workshop, I think that we guys went to, you get points for that. If you go to the N E S B convention, uh, you get points for that. So, if you look at it, you've seen the problems. If it's incorrect, let me know. I'll be happy to try and get it corrected for us. If you can read that. I struggle. And I think that's my last thing.
I have one thing. With us doing all these online classes and these dual credit classes, is there something in the handbook for these kids and parents to know? If they get credits, you know, are they getting, do they get high school credits for online classes at all?
No.
Well.
Come from a teacher.
If they're taught by a teacher, yes. Anything they do online is strictly.
I wonder if that should be in the handbook somewhere or like if it's dual, dual credit so that they know.
That's in the handbook.
Is it? How much can it say?
Yeah, I think that is in there. Yes, that is in there. But online, they, and usually when we do registration that night, they know when they sign up for those online classes that they don't get credits for their high school credit.
Is this on college?
Yeah. It's just college credit. And we have several. I mean, I think Tyan's gonna graduate with twenty-one credit hours or something like that. But he's also worked on it in the summer and.
So, do they, they can work on it in school though, on their own for online classes?
I still have my stuff in the handbook. That'll just be, just come out.
Do you set that up for them or do they do it all their own?
No, we set that up for them. And usually the, the most common are like a speech class. Because everybody requires you to take a speech class. Psychology is a big one, sociology, um, I think that's a big topic, accounting, one and two. Expensive things. I don't think, what else? One, they do a dual credit for math. That's all been changed though, so that will be a different story, so. Um, we try to hold off until they're junior. It just, I think it becomes a little older, a little under the phone as a sophomore. I mean, my daughter's a little one, but I don't know if they're gonna do it.
Have you adjourned?
Officially, we are ready to go to adjourn.
The whole meeting was gonna be kind of against that survey. They didn't feel that a survey was necessary. Because it can go one way or the other, you know? They found, and that's kind of what they said to us too that night when you say they were, well, they came out and asked you. They said, so what if it comes back seventy percent of the people are against it? They asked you that that night.
I said, we probably wouldn't even.
I don't know if you wanted to say that or you wanted me to.
It was fifty-fifty then, or it was close to that.
I can't hear what you're saying. Would you speak up please so we can hear what you're saying?
Maybe we need to turn that fan off. Scoot up a little closer, maybe?
Somebody have your shirt off. Hands off your mouth.
Oh, boy. I'm not talking about.
Do you have a chair?
I'll give you three more.
Mike, you can reach it. Get it, stand there.
Stand on the table.
I'm not standing. How many times I gotta pull it?
Three. That was a high.
Three from the high or one from the high?
High, false, wasn't it? One.
One? So do it again?
And that's not. What else did they discuss that, Bob? They discussed a little bit on.
Really, one, put a timeline in, which we kinda did, which was, um, have a survey in, what, May of sixteen? Sixteen. And have the vote on the bond issue in, uh, November of sixteen.
Was that on the bond issue or was that the straw poll vote?
The straw poll, whatever was supposed to be in, in May.
And that's the May one, okay.
And then the other one, I don't know what's in the minutes.
And then if they went on for the straw poll, then the bond issue would be.
Would be that, okay.
And I'm assuming that straw poll was the June item sixteen, right? Because it, you know, you talked about doing a, a survey by May of sixteen. I assume that's what that was.
Yeah.
And they kind of agreed with all the boards and put it, all the, to get all.
That's the idea.
Yeah.
And we had some people that talked about other ways to do this, unification. And got a little heated discussion on that for a while. And, uh, the idea was, um, it was time, they were trying to explain to the people that unification and some of those other things are options, but that's not what the five school study group has decided to do. They decided to go with the five school merger and study that. And that's the only thing that they're studying right now. I don't know. Is there anything else in the minutes that, I didn't take for good minutes, but, because I wasn't talking too much, probably.
I know the next, next committee meeting's here.
Yeah.
On May twelve.
Right.
Seven o'clock.
I think that's all, isn't it?
What's that?
I think that's all, isn't it?
Let's go to the next part of this, the survey. You guys all have a copy of the survey and you've seen it before. And any questions on this? I think, personally, I think we need to do this.
I agree.
As soon as we get, get it voted, get it.
One question. I have one. The results, I guess, is, uh, basically they got three choices. Do nothing, continue with the high school investigation, or three or two school. So the more you break them down, the more you're gonna split up your groups. So your numbers are gonna be closer together. So that's saying percentage that are for this group, percentage for that group, percentage for that group. You got two questions, you're gonna split them two sides. Three, you know, three groups. So what percentage difference? Are we gonna make a decision before this? Okay, if it says percentage, it's over. If it says percentage, it's not. Sometime we're gonna have to make that decision, either before or after the survey.
And I think question four, where it says, are you?
Five.
Not four, five.
Do you support any type of junior, senior high school consolidation?
So that's the note.
But number, but number six, do you support the continued research of a five school? If they, if it comes back no, you've got your answer.
Fifty-fifty or?
Yes or no, you've got your answer.
Well, they're probably gonna pick one of the three, five, six, or seven. Aren't they? I mean, what other option is there?
Well, they, they, say they answered yes to five, no to six, and yes to seven.
Okay, so then they're in the group that they're looking at two or three or school.
Which is not a five school consolidation.
Right.
Yeah, but then the five schools out, so you at least know.
Right, but let's say you got twenty-five percent that want nothing done, thirty-five percent that want the five school, forty-five percent that want the two or three school. I mean, they're all close together.
You have the two and three school. You have the two and three school that is, uh, none. Because right now, uh, options are five school or none, basically. Isn't that what you've been discussing for two years?
For the five school, basically.
Okay, but then what are you gonna go to after that? What are you gonna look at? Because nobody wants.
Well, that's just information for the future. Well, quite a few people said they would maybe be in favor of a three or two school merger.
Then you start over again.
You got another.
At the same time, aren't, we're looking at co-opping in junior high sports? That's kind of telling you that we weren't really against consolidation, in my opinion.
Well, it's co-op.
I understand that, but it could lead down the route of consolidation.
I think that's a good transition.
This is a survey.
Right.
Not much to do anything with this. But I quit at the top, this survey's designed to find opinions of District Five registered voters and is used by the school board members to make, in making decisions. So, I don't think we have to pre-decide what we're gonna do with it. Let's see what people say and then we can decide what from that. That's the idea, that we're gonna get some information. I mean, we gotta break this down too. This isn't gonna be easy to, 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 to take the poll on this because you're gonna have people that fill out the survey. Some of them are gonna be landowners. Some of them are gonna be homeowners and, some of them are gonna be both of those. Some of them are gonna have children and, so we're gonna have a lot of different categories where we're gonna have to classify.
We're gonna have a lot of results.
We're gonna have a lot of results. It's gonna take some time to put this stuff together. Because there's a lot of ways you can put those things together. And it might be very interesting to see how those things break. It's just not gonna be, it's gonna take us a while just to get the survey out. It's gonna take us a while to do the analysis of it. We may need a special meeting after we.
Twenty or thirty percent of that. I guess you don't have, you don't have a lot, a lot of surveys.
Right.
It'll take a lot of time.
Do we need to have a, a block up here? That just says, I know nothing about this, have no interest in it, and don't wanna check any boxes?
We could, but.
Ask their voter.
Well, but there could be some elderly people, you know.
Like this and throw away.
Don't you think they'll just throw it away and then want to send it back in? If they have no interest, they're not gonna send it in.
I mean, I got a place here where you can nip, nip smudge or something. If you want comments, put them on the back, so maybe they're.
Yeah.
Whatever.
This is definitely what the patrons want though. I mean, they asked for surveys since we started this discussion.
Yes, I talked, took the night that we were in Creighton. Osman was the one that kinda got this started. They were going to, they were gumbo to get this thing going. They've stopped since then or?
Well, they came out with that little.
High school resolution.
Thing where they're gonna have a, they're gonna have our own vote, vote. If we don't have other, if there were no other votes, they're gonna have one in January of.
Seventeen.
Two thousand seventeen.
Before the new board comes on, right?
Yeah.
Well, isn't that what the straw poll vote is?
I thought that's the one that was gonna be done in May of two thousand seventeen.
That's gonna cover their.
I wasn't that mean, so I don't know. That was my assumption.
Yeah. We really never talked about Osman's thing. Because theirs has a date of, of two thousand seventeen.
I think so, before a new board would come on.
That's when it expires.
Yeah, it's just when it expires.
And they'll have to pass it, that, there's no.
Before that?
Yeah.
It, it, it needs to be done before that and then when the new board comes on, they'll repass the reservation.
If it hasn't done before that, the new board can do it the way they want. So the straw poll vote, they're talking in May, will cover Osman's end of that.
Okay, okay.
And that's what the other three schools have kind of leaned towards, is doing that with Osman. This is what I got out of our meeting when we did the agenda that time.
We, I asked Mr. Holt to put together an information sheet to go with this. To kind of go through the same things that he talked about, um, at our open meeting that we had, the public meeting. You know, and, uh, you have that?
Well, I did. No. But, but I, I got two things on it that I worked on. When I was out at the nurse convention, I talked to a financial representative there and asked him to put together some numbers for us on basically, uh, what it would cost for a thirty-five million dollar building project and a forty million dollar building project. And then over fifteen years and over twenty years. He, he got that information too and I just kind of broke it apart. And that'll be one of the things I'll probably present. The other thing I worked on is, is trying to break down, uh, if you remember, one of the slides that had all the enrollment from pre-K up to seniors and then started back, what, two thousand or two thousand four, whatever it was. About twenty years of, uh, ten years of past or ten years of projection. I tried to, to break it down instead of having every grade go, I, I didn't, I left preschool out. Go K six, seven, eight, nine, twelve, sort of look at the numbers and see how they change over that time. So those are the two things I've got to put together so far off of what we, uh, what we had. And then, and I, I'll go back and, and I've looked at a couple of other things I've, I've wanted to put on there about, you know, that we've talked about. Just to get a little bit of an information sheet for people to look at. But there's something on there about, you know, course offering, what could happen with that, those types of things.
Basically, we had an information, some information sheets. This survey, I don't know, we give them seven days after the, after we mail it out to get them back. Put the information together and then see what. So we, we need to all get together, help the mailing. And we all need to get together and do the analysis. So we, we need to all get together, help the mailing, and we all need to get together and do the analysis, and then we may want to have a special meeting. I don't even know if we have to, we don't have to have a special meeting to do all this analysis.
No, not to that, my suggestion would be, you don't have more than three board members there at one time.
So we can divide the work out.
Divide the work out.
As long as we're not doing it in the same place, then we're all right.
My patio, my living room, my kitchen. No, you could actually split them up into three, three and a half.
Get the demographic things figured out. Then you could send half of them over here, and let them do their part of it, and then send forward to the other guys, and they can do the other part.
So what does that really, I mean, it's gonna tell us who's voting which way, but as far as making a decision from it, is it really gonna make any difference if majority of the people are, are one group, leaning one way, and another group are leaning the other way, does that really make a difference when we're all one?
Well, you can have the demographic thing, but you can also have, over the whole thing, how many people will vote for number five?
Yeah, I understand those, but I'm just wondering how we're gonna bring this demographic thing into those other questions. Do we really need to know how many people that want this are landlords, and how many of them are homeowners, and how many of them?
If we don't care about that, we can take that out.
I mean, it'd be interesting.
You can collect the data, whether, you could just, we could just collect the data on number five and six. We can do whatever we want.
Yeah. Or use that data and the rest of the people we have.
Yeah, I mean, whatever you feel is relevant to what we're wanting to look at.
If you're a landlord, you're, we're here for the kids. I mean, I'm, I'm all right with leaving it in there, but I'm just wondering how we need to insert it with the questions. That's gonna be a lot of work.
Well, maybe we don't need to do that, right? Maybe we just need to look at some of these questions and see if there's a major idea, and we can maybe do that later when we look at some other things, you know? Because that, it takes a lot of time to do that.
Well, let's go ahead and collect it now.
Okay.
And then we can decide whether we wanna use it.
Right.
That way we don't have to go back and get it later.
That's right, that's kinda what I was thinking.
Yeah.
I'm making a motion, we do the survey as soon as possible.
That's a river in Iowa.
Oh, sorry, I forgot, well, I wanted it soon.
We're discussing it right now.
We're supposed to complain about that, we should, but.
That's on, okay, absolutely. Okay, anything else on survey, that we wanna talk on? All right, with this one.
About the timeline, and that, that, the timeline there was referring to, I think it was Agenda sixteen. What brought up the back, is there ever down to look at the building survey, a little year from now?
Right.
Any comments on that?
I don't have a problem with the timeline. Depends on how the good things go.
Exactly.
There one thing, I talked about about this, and maybe, maybe my concerns are way, way out based, but. You know, if we pull out of this deal, have our survey and decide to pull out, and the other four schools say, you know, we're not so sure we wanna leave, Plankton gets out, we can get C one school, compete with the other schools that are around here, we don't, we aren't a mega school, we aren't as big a district, we don't have to build as big a school, there's a lot of positives about us leaving. And, you know, there's, there's some negatives, probably, you know, we bring a lot of assets to it, too. But if these four schools would decide, you know, to go on and look at something with four, where's that gonna leave us down the road? Because we're gonna have, you know, people that think we can go on fifteen, twenty years, and then close the doors, they're mistaken, because we're always sharing teachers, we're already talking about sharing sport, co-opting sports, so that fifteen, twenty years is here. And if these four schools would happen, and I don't know whether it's a five percent chance, twenty-five percent chance of them doing that, where's that leave us? Where are we gonna co-op with, who are we gonna share teachers with? We're gonna have to let Randolph, Tilden, Neely, Verdigris, because these schools aren't gonna need us anymore. They aren't gonna need to co-op, they aren't gonna need to share teachers. So that's, that's a concern I have about leaving the table before we get to where all five towns vote at the same time. And then if it doesn't pass, you know, it's gonna fall apart. But if we get out now, and the other four school towns say, hey, this might be a better deal without them, and they go on without us, what are we gonna do then? And that twenty thousand dollars it's gonna cost us to stay into that point is gonna be chicken feed compared to what we're gonna have to do if they do it without us. And try to figure out how we're gonna work with another school, I think. Now, maybe, maybe there's no chance of that happening, I don't know, the possibility is there.
Yeah.
So, just something to think about, you know, when we review this survey, whether we wanna get out of this study, and we wanna take that risk of that possibly happening. Because they might say, yeah, hold you long distance with you, but, you know, you put a camera, we'll put a camera in front of our teacher, you put yours in front of a TV and send us a check, but we're not sending a teacher down there, because we don't need to.
But then I look at it as another way, we've all kind of accepted the fact that if, if a five school were to take place, there's probably some students on the outline fringes, South Osman, South of Brunswick, maybe, I don't know how far, but those kids won't wanna go to the predicted or location that we've discussed.
Right.
Maybe those kids will go, oh, Plankton's still here, they come here, and we stay a, a C two school, or a D two school, and.
Okay, and what about scenario if they go on, they're probably gonna build a school the same place that we're talking about now, about five miles from our school district. What's gonna keep our kids around the northwest and northeast from not going up there, because they offer so much more than what Plankton can offer, so. You know, they might send their kids to Creighton and Osman to grade school, and to the new school for their high school, we might lose more kids than, from that. Possibility, I don't know. But I feel like we stay in it until all five schools vote at the same time, and then it falls apart, then I think we can break down into our smaller two or three school talks.
And they wanna wait until May of sixteen to get the architecture and to get the?
No, they wanna do all that before May sixteen, they wanna have all those answers.
But that's, but that's why they have to wait till May sixteen, is to get the architecture.
Right.
And the location, and get all that stuff. So that's gonna cost us another three hundred thousand, probably, is what?
No, it's gonna be a hundred thousand to get to that point.
A hundred thousand was just for the architecture, architect.
No.
I mean, we had that meeting in North Park, it's what, you said it'd be anywhere from two to three hundred thousand?
The preliminaries, uh, you're talking, I think, more toward that, I don't know, the preliminary won't be that much for the architecture. I think the, the number that Rex Schultz used in Wausau that night, I believe, is a hundred thousand, that's like the preliminary of architecture, uh, legal representation, I believe.
I don't think they're trying to get to the bond issue decisions by this May sixteenth, but they want a lot more answers than what we have now. But they wanna stop there, so if it doesn't go at that point, we haven't spent all the money. I don't know, that's just a concern I have, you know, for that, if it's twenty, twenty-five thousand to get to that point, well.
I, I'm to the point where, I wanna get going on this, I wanna make some decisions.
Does this timeline push it?
I'm, uh, year and a half, two years, I don't know how many, I've gone to a lot of meetings. You guys have all gone to a lot of meetings, and you guys have just, are just getting, we've talked about this, we've been talking about it for, I don't know how long, it's like, I think the people want to have a vote on it. And there's all kinds of scenarios, and little things you can go with that, and all those kind of things. Um, but some, we gotta let people vote, and then we can decide what we're gonna do from there. This is a, again, this is a fact, finding information, hopefully. But if we got seventy percent against it, then I, I don't see why we're just gonna go on. If we got thirty percent for it, it'd be great to go on, but I don't, let's do whatever they want us to do.
The, the only thing with that bond, you would have, probably another year, hopefully, and I don't think you're gonna move slowly, uh, you would have more information for people to make the decision. That'd be the, the other thing. Have a little better idea of the cost, a bigger, better idea of how the curriculum lies, you know, maybe location of the building, you might have some ideas, all that type of thing.
You wanna talk about school visits at all, do you, you gave us a copy of this?
I, I just got to hang out here. Evidently, the, the investigative committee and the, what's the other one, Economic Labor Committee got together, and, uh, I think they met together and and arranged an age for a visit to Southern Valley, which is down, south, southwest of Holdridge, uh, Centura, which would be not too far from Grand Island, and then, uh, uh, Cross County, which is down Mount York. And each of those districts are, they're consolidated districts where there's a building built out in the country. So, that, that visit is going to take place, uh, Wednesday and Thursday of this week, here's a kind of a schedule, I sat around, I think this is the latest schedule I've put together. We're gonna be leaving from here at seven o'clock Wednesday morning, driving all the way down to, uh, Southern Valley. Uh, that, on Wednesday afternoon, go through the, and they're gonna meet with the superintendent, business owners, I think there's a former superintendent there, former board members and current board members. Uh, you can see through the list there. We go back to Grand Island that night, stay overnight in Grand Island, on Thursday, we'll go to, uh, Cairo Centura. Uh, gonna have an opportunity, looks like to get there in time, maybe have breakfast, coffee, communities, and talk to some patrons there. Uh, they got something set up there, and then after that, go to Cross County, and, uh, have a, have a chance to meet with some business people and some board members there. So, that's what's on the agenda, uh, if any of you, I think I've talked to everything except, uh, Mike, I don't know, I, I don't know, can you go? If you can, let me know.
I'll sit down there.
Everybody else is, is busy.
I don't think you'll let me sit that long.
Busy, but, uh, I am gonna plan on going. So, uh, you know, I'll have more information following Thursday, I guess. Here, I'll pass around, these are questions that have been kinda submitted up to this point, uh, these were sent out, I think, uh, today or after today.
Yeah, we're after the office.
Yeah. And, and what they did is they asked the different board members from their committees, you know, uh, any questions you'd like to see answered, so. Uh, they put just together a list, and what these do is just give us kind of a frame of reference to, you know, to go through when we meet with businessmen and, uh, the board members from the other communities, so. Uh, if, if you have any other questions that you'd like, you have asked, uh, call me tomorrow, whatever, let me know. They did talk about taking a video camera and videotaping some of the media, I don't know, that'll happen or not, that was discussed, I guess, so.
What's, what's the size of ours that we're looking to remember offhand, I'm just looking at the size of these schools, would ours be enrollment?
It wasn't five.
Around eleven, around eleven hundred, total. I've, you know, I've been in the, the Southern Valley facility, the high school, uh, I have not been there, I think they've built elementaries there now, who their elementaries are, maybe, I have not been there since they've done the elementaries. I have never been to the Centura site, uh, I have been to the facility at, uh, Cross County, we had, uh, one act there three, four years ago. How many kids do we have in our school right now? In our school right now? You know, three twenty, pre, pre-K, well. I don't know, Centura's been around a long, long time.
Sixty-seven.
As far as you say.
Sixty-seven.
I don't know how big that was originally. Uh, when Southern Valley, I think, they were probably a pretty good size C school, like they were starting, I don't think they were being.
Are they now, C two?
I would guess not, they're C one.
Or is it four?
Centura's probably C one.
Probably.
Cross County.
Cross County.
Not like they're.
They might be. They might call C one, or C two, or C two. Okay, let's go on, Act on Rebecca Doll's resignation as Plato one teacher.
Rebecca Doll's acceptance of her contract.
I'm making a motion to accept Rebecca Doll's resignation with regards to Plato one teacher effective at the end of the current year.
I'll sign.
Okay, motion's been made to seconded, Rowley, Bateson?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Yourself, yes?
Yes.
Motion carries. Act on certified staff contracts for two thousand fifteen, sixteen.
This is just basically approving the contracts, uh, for the people that are currently on staff that are returning, uh, you know, recommendation of the administration to rehire, uh, these people.
You gotten everybody's back?
Yes, sir. I think everybody is, has returned.
And President and Secretary, I believe, got to sign those tonight.
Yes. So once, if you pass them, before we leave anyways, somebody will need to sign.
I'll make a motion to offer equivalent FTE teaching contracts for the twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen school year to all certificated staff members currently holding teaching positions at Plankton Public School, with the exception of those who have already resigned. Assignment of duties will be determined by the superintendent of schools and administrative staff. Salaries, benefits, and conditions of employment will be established by the negotiated master contract.
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Vicki?
Yes.
Myself, yes, Mike?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Bateson?
Yes.
Motion to access.
Approve hiring of new certified staff.
Okay, we have offered the instrumental music position to Tessa Jacobson, she is currently teaching at Skyline. And, uh, possibly, we will be working with Osman again this year on the vocal teacher, uh, the only difference will be, we held a contract on the teacher this year, they are gonna hold a contract on the teacher next year, and that's kind of the way it developed, there was, I have to be careful what I say here, and that's, the person they hired as a music teacher had some connections to this teacher, with this teacher. So, and, and we did interview, interview them, talk to them, and I think this worked out very well, uh, for both schools this year. We're, we are gonna add a little bit of time to what we had last year, we're gonna make it, uh, basically gonna look at taking the first three periods of the day, give us a little flexibility with what we do. You know, last year it worked where, just to see how it was coming, from Neely, she would come here, she went to Oz, and then she'd come back here for another class, it's not probably, not gonna work out quite as good this year, or next year, so, we went with actually three periods.
Is she gonna have a time in there? Is she, uh, on this part, this one that we have halftime, or is she gonna live Orion or whatever?
I am guessing they're gonna live probably in Oz, okay, I'm guessing, I don't know.
So you're saying, this year they have two travel periods, but next year they only need one, is that correct?
Well, Mrs. C, I left here to go over, and then had taught elementary, and then had to go back, this year the person will start, or next year the person will start.
She didn't come back to teach again, she just came back through her, and went home.
No, she came and taught at the end of the day.
Okay, so she had two travels, she had to travel from here to Osman, from Osman back here.
Well, she had to come through here to home anyway.
She had, but she had to have a period to do that, for her school.
Total position was three quarters.
Where now she'll need one.
This year we're gonna make it a full-time, or next year we're gonna make it a full-time position between two districts.
So we're, so they're getting more of her time than we are?
Yeah, yeah.
But we'll start as much as we had this year. We'll start as much teacher time as we had this year. We'll start as much as teacher time as we had this year.
We'll have a little more time this year than we had this year. It seemed like the best alternative to getting the position filled would cover, you know, our needs adequately.
Make a motion to approve hiring Tessa Jacobson as the five twelve Eastern Music Teacher for the two thousand fifteen, sixteen school year.
Motion's been made and seconded. Steve?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Vicki?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So, is she a first-time teacher, or what's?
Well, she's currently teaching at Skyler.
Oh, that's right.
Is this Ryan Ginn, is that, is that a first-time teacher?
No, he is currently teaching at Crawford.
Oh, okay.
Make a motion to approve contracting with Osmond for Ryan Ginn's services to teach world-class music next year for point four three seven five FTE.
Okay.
Who said we did that?
Me.
Jason?
Mike's time.
Made and seconded. Vicki?
Yes.
Myself, yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Motion carries. Act, discuss on improving a timeline for the five school study, which I think we already talked about.
Do we have a, a timeframe written down, this timeline?
Other than, you know, I think this came out of that, that meeting, agreed with the, the, the meeting.
So, I wonder will you really approve?
Improving that, that we're gonna have a public survey.
On that May six.
In the five school merger group by May two thousand sixteen.
And that's all it's?
Kind of, if that passes, then we will have a bond issue. For that, we're just, this is for the first.
So, if that passes, then they'll set up the timeline on what we gotta do to get to that?
Right, and we assume that we won't, you know, that's the, this doesn't say that.
And that's what everybody at that five school meeting kind of were in grants, they thought of, some sort of timeframe they need to develop something.
Would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to act to establish May of two thousand sixteen as a timeline to have a public survey vote on how to proceed with consolidation efforts.
I'll second.
I only have one question. Is this gonna, is this gonna contradict anything that we decided to do on our, this is a consolidation, this is five school merger consolidation survey? That doesn't have anything to do with our survey?
No, I don't think.
The, the timeline that was talked about at the five school meeting also included the November thing. It also included the November part?
Bond issue?
It's not in the motion for the November part to be approved as well?
No.
I mean, are we just, is that gonna be a problem with everybody else? If you just say timeline and you say only May and not the November part, the timeline talked about at the committee meeting was both, but...
Is this what everybody was gonna vote on tonight?
Yeah, that's what they invited, I think, Cap Jansen.
Oh, okay.
This is what they talked about.
So, everybody was voting on the same one?
Yeah, that was my understanding. Everybody would have this as an agenda.
Okay, so we have the motion, and we got a second ready vote. Steve?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Myself, yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Discuss act on conducting a survey pertaining to the five school study. This is our study. We need discussion anymore? We're ready to go?
I'll make a motion to approve conducting a survey pertaining to the five school study, our survey.
I'll second.
Seconded. Approve conducting the survey. Vicki?
Yes.
Myself, yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We need to put a timeline on that.
We didn't, but we're gonna do it soon.
ASAP. Yeah, so it's ten minutes.
You get it done, Jason. Okay, are we done with that stuff, that page? Okay, we're for reports. Activity director's report.
Pretty much what I gave you is all I got.
Okay? Any questions on the rest?
Anything done with the maps showing up or the order?
They're ordered. I have not heard of it. I've heard it's all emailed and, I doubt, so.
I just wanna say when I was around here at the alumni time, and you were here, a lot more than I was probably, but a lot of comments on other gyms looked and...
Yeah, I had a lot of comments.
Good comments, all good. Didn't hear any bad.
Just the A D D.
Huh?
Just C A D needed to go.
Yeah, but I did make the prediction that we would have more injuries this year than we've ever had total. And we did have a kid blow his knee out on the floor.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, because they don't slide like they used to. When they put the foot down, they stop. So, yeah. And maybe it had nothing to do with it, might happen anywhere.
That's what it's supposed to do.
Yeah, that's what it's supposed to do, but old people aren't used to doing that.
Principals report.
Mine's kind of short. We are in the middle of NISA testing. We started reading and finished with both elementary and secondary. I can take a sneak peek at our preliminary results. And so far, they look pretty good. We do science for five, eight, and eleven this week. Tomorrow, we start with fifth grade, I do reading. And then we do math at the end of the month. We try to wait, because they opened the window a week earlier this year and closed it May first, but we have to have a few days in there to get all the makeups done and stuff. And so, I don't start May twenty-third or March twenty-third, because we have nine weeks of school left. I don't get it if we can see the results immediately, why it can't even go further into May, but I don't work for the State Department, so. Maps testing is done, finished. All of those on, you know, online web based, things went well. And they did say there were some problems with the writing, but we didn't see any of those when we did it. And so far, we haven't had any major issues with any of the state testing. Scheduling and registration has started. I have the juniors and sophomores done, not completely. A few kids gone, have to still go get those. Evaluating textbooks, that takes forever to do. We had prom on Saturday. I didn't hear of any major issues. Food was really good and...
Did they go back to the B M's and stuff this year?
They went back to the Y.
Go back to the Y.
They have good attendance at the Y?
I mean, did a lot of kids sign up to go? I try to stay as far away from them as I can. I, I don't know.
I heard it was really down, so I wondered.
I had heard it was anywhere between thirty-five and forty. But we also had probably fourteen juniors and seniors that didn't come to prom period. So, they need to, because those things that we served, maybe seventy-five people at the dinner, maybe. That includes the dates and everything, so I don't know. But we didn't have any issues with kids. They danced pretty much all night. If we're gonna have a dance, we dance, otherwise we just get dressed up and walk through the gym. But they did dance all night. State FFA was April tenth through the eleventh, no, April eighth through the tenth. There is a plaque over there that Mr. Komet brought in, a couple of them. I just noticed him, he didn't bring it to me, he just brought him in here. And then he didn't give me any results as far how kids did, so people aren't sure. He just, they just got back, so. State of C C L A is going right now. They went to the Digital Citizenship Assembly, April eighth in Osmond. They took grades six through twelve. I did talk to a few kids, and even the high school kids said it was worth listening to. She's, there's not a lot of gray area with that lady. She's pretty much cut and dry and have to tell them like it is. I've heard her speak several times, and she's very good, so.
This is about...
This is about inappropriate use of technology and what can get, that can lead to you if you decide to appropriately use it. Kind of a wicked call, too. I think, my own opinion, is something that new teachers need to go through. I think they should have to attend one of these seminars, because every month or every six months, whenever they do those teacher revocation notifications, inevitably, there's one in there that has inappropriate contact with a student via social media and, of course, other things, but... So, I warned the staff on several occasions, don't communicate through social media with students. I know a lot of people say, oh, it's a great way to get your lessons out there. Well...
So, not even that way? I mean, you don't...
Well, they literally recommend, don't, don't put them on Facebook, don't do any of those things.
But if somebody texts a teacher and has a question about homework or something, maybe it's not...
They can, yeah. But the one problem then you have is that if you start doing that, then that kid has a advantage over somebody else and, like, just gets you into a world of trouble. I just said, don't do it. Be safe. State speech, I think Cory had been there, too. Coltoner to secondary, and a fifth, and Nikki Moel to sixth at state. Contest concert, I'm not sure who was all there. That was very well done. Our kids should do well when they go to Hardington shortly, Athletic Honors Night. I think Cory has been there as well. That is April twenty-seventh. The Elementary Screen Concert is May fifth. And if you look at the calendar online, there's something every single day, and we just put three more things on there. And so, that meeting that you have on the twelfth is our honors night. So, if we're hosting that, you have to work out some logistics.
Yeah, we're hosting, we'll be probably in here.
Okay.
It's a meeting.
Okay. That's all I have for that.
That's a record.
Gee, I feel like the old days of the athletic festival, where Bob Green and Dean Boyer and his favorite timing.
That's a five school meeting, right? So, we only have, how many board members are there?
We're gonna have three.
Is that the same school? Is that gonna be a conference?
With what?
In the same school, they're gonna have a conference? I'm sorry, I was looking at your question.
They'll all be in the same school, but some will be at that, like, but some will still be in here for as far as a quorum.
No. How is it any different if you're out of evening center? Friday morning, different areas.
I'm sorry, you're behind myself.
I don't have anything to do with the superintendent's report, superintendent's report?
I got a couple things. First of all, I'm happy to announce, and I think puts some information, I've had an article in the paper, that Plainview was selected one of three different, three schools in the state of Nebraska to receive an award at the nurse convention, this Nebraska World Community Schools Association. I was contacted, I think I reported this last month, I think I did. We were, I was contacted by the executive director of the organization. Ms. Novick and I did go to Carney. Part of this, we give a presentation on some things that we've been doing, that we, we feel had an effect on raising our, our scores enough to close the achievement gap. Basically, they were looking at students in, free and reduced lunch students is what it was. Yeah. And in order to, to earn this award, they had some criteria, they had like five, six different things. It was over a six-year period, and you add to your graduation rates, your, your math, reading and writing scores, all had to improve every year. And I think the toughest thing about it was if, let's say, your math scores, for examples, would've gone down one year and then gone back up, you were kicked out. You had to make progress every single year in all of those areas. So, when they, they studied all of the rural, what they defined as rural schools in Nebraska, when, when they took a look at all of the data they had about the rural three schools, it was Plainview, Wheeler Central, and Holmwood, were the three schools. So, each received an award. And part of this, and if you can read that, we also received a one thousand dollar check, so, which was kind of nice, and to spend on school improvement activities. And they're, they're looking at doing a national webinar that they would like us to participate in, that will probably be next fall. And Ms. Novick is really hoping to follow through on this, that possibly being invited to a national convention in Denver sometime would be part of the presentation there. It, it is quite an honor, and you take a look at three schools, I don't know, a hundred and eighty-some schools in Nebraska they consider rural, there's only three of them that, that, like, there is.
Some states didn't have any. Colorado only have one.
They used to say we're eating all across the nation.
It's attendance, A C T scores, those scores in our standardized tests. So, they worked very hard.
Good thing we started out well.
And, you know, our, our teachers don't even know who our free and reduced kids are. They don't know who to even target, so to do that is quite an accomplishment.
Well, it's kind, kind of interesting, listen, as the other two schools presented, and then take a look at maybe some of the similarities. And I would say exactly that. I don't think any of the three schools targeted specific areas. And expectations for all kids, where you say, I don't care if they're free or reduced, I don't, I don't care about that. This is what we want all, all of our kids to be able to do. And, you know, just a couple other things that kind of come out in there, I'd say expectations were probably one of the biggest things. So, it's, it's a nice award.
So, what is our graduation rate, Ron?
One hundred percent. What do you mean?
Year in, year out?
One hundred percent.
Wonderful.
It kills me they're gonna graduate like all right.
They're coming back.
No, I want them to drop out. I, I want them all to graduate.
That's good.
So, and that was one of them, too. I mean, there were only, what, the number came out, there were only sixty schools in the state and Nebraska, one hundred percent graduated.
For one year.
And we were one of those. We always had them.
No, but I mean, those sixty schools could only do that claim for one year.
Correct, and then they'll redo it again next year.
Yeah, but if you want it over three years, it probably, there wouldn't be sixty, but they're not considerable.
Because in this thing, there were seven of us that started, and then four of them got booted. One reason or the other, they didn't really stay long. And all kinds of formulas that math and science people really love.
The research was actually done by, was it RAL? Research, I think, it's in Colorado. Using Muck RAL, I think, is the same. It's an educational research firm, so they're, they do a lot of research, they pull a lot of data together.
So, did they score like, out of those top three? I mean, they just three, or were we, how'd we fall in line with those?
I don't know if they really told us.
Just curious. There had to be a top.
We didn't want a three-way tie. We wanted, you know...
Four ones.
It's a tough crowd.
We've got expectations.
We'll work on that.
Yeah, there we go.
Just ask them.
Can we do that thousand dollars to counter service?
We were one, we were one, but we were one.
Default by three.
I don't know.
You don't pay a thousand to cover it.
I think last month I reported that Becky Baller had turned in her resignation. We, we have done some interviewing, and we have offered that position to Tamie Hazy. She's accepted, so she'll be our development secretary, which means we'll be looking for some changes with Perez and that. Jacob Yostin, who's our assistant custodian, has also turned in his resignation as of a few days ago, and we will be looking for an assistant custodian again.
He's the one that just came on, right?
How much do we pay? I don't know what first name is, I'm just wondering, curiosity.
Eleven something.
And then she pays.
Do they work a forty-hour week or plus?
Yeah, it's about forty-five, I think, that's.
Yes.
And then it goes, you know, whole insurance goes along with it, any insurance.
The hours just aren't the best, isn't it? Early in the morning, they need to home.
They start pretty early. And then, the way, the way it's been working, it comes in the morning, they go home for a while, and then comes back, and then finishes up. You know, I think it gets up by thirty, thirty-five.
I think five o'clock.
But anyhow, we are looking for assistant custodian again.
Did you have any applications?
Not yet.
Scared of them? Need a job, Vicki? No.
Want to get partying out of the house?
Would.
Scoot him out.
Want it?
With Mrs. Doll's resignation, we're looking at... With Mrs. Doll's resignation, we're looking at, you know, hiring an elementary teacher. Right now, we have the possibility of maybe moving Depp Jensen in title. And then what we've been, we've been interviewing for is Mrs. Wabbs, excuse me, would, we hired her last year as kind of a teacher to flow along that kindergarten class that was split. I think we're going to put her probably in kindergarten, full kindergarten class, then we're actually looking for a first grade teacher position. It's kind of the scenario we put together. There could be a possibility we'll need another teacher to help with doing with these kindergarten stuff. Numbers keep coming in, there's a possibility.
So, have you started interviewing? Thank you. Interviewing for the elementary for...
Yes.
When will we make that decision? Soon?
Very soon.
Very soon. Tonight? Perfect.
Maybe, yeah.
Okay, go for it. Get it done.
We've been interviewing.
Okay.
Locker rooms, we talked about this last month. We had Mike and Adam come in, take a look, and talk to Gail. I'm not too sure what, what we'll end up doing. And there's some issues with those, you know, the posts coming down in the middle of the showers and that, because there's ventilation going down through them. So I'm not too sure what we're going to be able to do with that. If tearing them out is necessarily the best thing. They need to leave those there, you know, maybe worry about maybe doing something more cosmetically along the outside and that. But we are, we're kind of working on that to see what we can do.
I'd like to talk to Gail, we talked, and I'd like to talk to you about possibly doing soft water in there?
Might be a possibility.
And would maybe clog up, you know, the showers as much, or is that...
I did say, that's one of the issues, you said the girls complained about the water, and she says, oh, now...